Southampton Town Board to order on this eighteenth day of May, 2023. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Sunday, would you call the roll?
Certainly. Supervisor Schneiderman.
I'm here.
Councilwoman McChamara.
Here.
Councilwoman Martel.
Here.
Councilwoman Bouvier.
Here.
Councilwoman Tevan.
Present.
All right. Good morning, everybody. Let's get started. We're going to begin with reviewing the agenda for the meeting on May 23rd. So I think that's next Tuesday. And that meeting is probably evening. Yeah, it's a 6:00 PM meeting. And we have six public hearings. That meeting event will be hybrid. It'll be here at Town Hall. First one is a hearing on enforcement action at One Squires Pond Road in Hampton Bay for unsanitary condition of water supplies. Tax map number is 900-175-1-4. Second is a hearing to consider the acquisition of lands of four, I'm sorry, K4K LLC located at 381 Flanders Boulevard at Flanders, amending the CPF Management Institute Plan for that property. Third one is a public hearing to consider the adoption of the 2023 CPF Pilot Plan. Number four is a public hearing to consider amending Section 6.5 penalties for offenses of Southampton Town Code, Chapter 164, fire prevention, in order to increase penalties and add a mandatory surcharge. Excuse me. Number five, public hearing for supplemental funding for WQIP for Alwife Creek Stormwater and Restoration Project. And the last one, number six, public hearing to relocate WQIP funding from Flying Point Comfort Station to Hot Dog Beach Comfort Station. So does anybody have any questions about any of the hearings? All right, let's move on to resolutions. We'll start. John, I guess you have the question first.
Town Board Resolution 640 of 2023, authorize reallocation of WQIP funding from Flying Point Comfort Station to Hot Dog Beach Comfort Station.
So that's following the public hearing on that issue. So my notes say this has to be withdrawn. Now, it's not, I wouldn't be withdrawing it if it hasn't been introduced. Is it already in?
It's a tabled resolution, so you need to withdraw it.
It's a tabled resolution. Okay. So we'll do that on the floor, but it authorizes a supervisor to enter into an agreement with HADUC Engineering or Professional Engineering Services in connection with the preparation of a feasibility study to service the Business District of Hampton Bay. So I guess we're not going to amend it where we have a brand-new resolution.
Right. It's also in here.
It's in the packet.
Yeah.
All right. It's on page 23. So I don't know why we're doing it that way, but it's fine. All right. So Tommy, John?
Town Board Resolution 682 of 2023, this is a resolution of adoption, amending town code, Chapter 283, and special events.
And...
We're also getting legal advice in executive session today.
Are there two like this or just one?
One.
Okay. I know there's some debate about the bill. So I guess we are on page 23. 43411, authorize the supervisor to enter into an agreement with HADUC Engineering for Professional Engineering Services in connection with the preparation of a feasibility study to service the Business District of Hampton Bay. So this is the one that we specifically include the landfill properties, right?
Yes.
And we mentioned, yeah, it's a transfer station. Yep, I see it. And also that we've already looked at 37 Terry Road. So we're looking at other properties. So that's what I think we had wanted to achieve. All right. John?
Resolution ID 43420, accept an award, accept award and authorize the supervisor to execute a contract with New York State Energy Research and Development Authority, NYSRTA, Just Transition Program Action Grant for Clean Energy.
Town Board Resolution 43317. There you go, John.
Yeah. 43317.
Alphabetical your phrase.
Authorize a survey for Pritchard Properties located at 3398 Neuyak Road and 146 Old Neuyak Road.
Town Board Resolution 43358, authorize supervisor to sign a contract with Belay Stack Incorporated for the software as a service solution to manage the Fire Marshal's operations.
Town Board Resolution ID 43316, authorize supervisor to sign a contract with GoGov Incorporated, doing business as GoGov, to utilize cloud-based software solutions to manage Town Clerk's operations. Town Board Resolution ID 43353, authorize supervisor to sign an amended contract with Green Velvet Trees for Trails Maintenance.
43395, authorizes me to sign a contract with Commander Electric for Southampton Volunteer Ambulance Flashing Beacon.
Sunday, I'd like to cosponsor. And this is not a traffic light.
It's not a traffic light.
Even though it hangs out in front of the new ambulance barn.
Right.
It's a full, it's a full light, though.
It looks like a traffic light.
Yeah.
But it only goes red if there's a fire, if there is one.
Well, there's probably significant amount of state law in what you hang over on county road, right? You have to stop traffic and let ambulance in and out.
So we're up, I guess Cindy, you're next.
Town Board Resolution ID 43310, authorize the purchase of motor fuels from the Alny Partners Cooperative contract with Truman Arnold Companies.
The next one, 43398, authorizes me to execute a 2023 service and maintenance agreement with Best Climate Control for Maintenance and Service of the air conditioning and heating equipment at Southampton Police Department.
Town Board Resolution ID 43394, authorize the supervisor to execute a consulting contract amendment with H2M Architects Engineers Land Surveying and Landscape Architecture, DPC, for rehabilitation of the Bellows Pond Elevated Storage Tank.
Town Board Resolution ID 43330, authorize supervisor to execute a contract, Suffolk County Office for the Aging, for expanded in-home services for the elder.
Just hold on a second. Just on the Bellows Pond, we've already rehabilitated it.
There was an additional... There was a delay. There was an additional charge.
I mean, it's 50 grand. I don't know, what is it?
The second part of the contract.
Do we have the increase in amount we're paying H2M? Is that...
Mm-hmm.
It was a big project.
Yeah, I think we had extended their contract at the beginning of the year, and this is just the additional.
Yeah, that's what I recall.
Yeah.
Okay. 43399, authorize the supervisor to execute any and all documents pertaining to the 2023 transportation contract at Suffolk County Office of the Aging. Did we miss one or did I miss one?
43330, you did that, right? You did that. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, and then I went back one more.
Town Board Resolution 43415, authorize the supervisor to renew an agreement with E-Scope Solution Incorporated for IT Services.
43331, authorizes me to sign a amended contract with Hampton Hopper for shuttle services associated with Southport Community Connection. Now that, yeah, that, let's see what this is doing, because I know we're trying to get that Friday bus up and running, but I doubt that this is...
Friday afternoon westbound.
This may be just the larger bus.
It's 3:50.
Second paragraph on the bottom.
Last whereas or the cost, oh, yeah, this is, so it's got the Friday afternoon westbound, they're calling it shuttle service, but that is, that's going to be the bus sort of that takes people back.
And then the second westbound afternoons from late May through September.
No, I guess we're paying for this. I don't know if East Hampton's paying anything. It looks like we're, there's this...
It's coming out of the general store money that we share with East Hampton.
East Hampton Shuttle, if needed, okay. So does this also accommodate the larger bus or just the shuttle? I think it's just the Friday afternoon.
And are we going to track how many people are actually using the bus?
Was it?
Are we going to track how many people are actually using the bus and see if it's used?
We should. Yeah, so this allows people then to not have to drive to work on Fridays, because before they had no way to get back, now they have a way to get back.
But I'm thinking that some people might, if they have to sit in traffic on the bus, they might just want to drive on Fridays. So I'd just like to see if the numbers are...
But then they have to, if they're going to drive, then they got to drive in the morning.
Yeah.
So they can avoid the traffic in the morning. And there's just something nice about taking a bus home, you can get work done. So we'll see.
Yeah.
Right. This is, this is not ideal, but when Long Island Railroad instituted the trains between May and September on Friday mornings, there was still no way to get back on Friday afternoon. So ideally, we want the train to run on Friday afternoons coming back. This is to allow people, like Jay said, to, you know, get back to their car on Friday afternoons if they take the train in the morning, which is what we'd like them to do.
It's just a lot of money, so I just wanted to make sure it's worth the people who are actually using it.
It's not a lot. It's a few thousand dollars more over the course of the summer.
Right. And it's state-funded.
No, it's not, that's not the cost of adding Friday. The cost of adding Friday was like an extra 5,000 or 7,000. That's the total, everything. Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure why.
Why is the $333,000 total in there?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. Let's try to check that by the...
Well, that's the contract, intermodal contract, not to exceed a number.
For everything.
That's the overall.
That's the total, total.
Okay, because that makes it seem like it's for this.
East Hampton and Southampton, right.
And Fred got...
All of the loops.
Fred got the funding up to 750,000, which is incredible. He got an extra 250,000. And we had half a million, but we share it with East Hampton. They're actually running more service than we are.
Yeah, they expanded their service in East Hampton. And for good reason, there's more people going there and going to different places.
Because their workers have to drive to Southampton.
Everyone that I heard from that works in East Hampton loves it.
Yeah. Well, at least they don't have to drive to Southampton.
Yeah.
Less cars on the road.
A lot of businesses near the train station in East Hampton, the schools are within walking distance, and a lot of people from East Hampton Town take the train as well.
No, it's great, it's a, it's a great thing. It's getting more and more used. Last time I looked at the numbers, they were up significantly, so. And the traffic is so bad, as you all know. All right, so John, you have the next one?
Town Board Resolution ID 43421, authorize the supplemental funding for WQIP, Valewife Creek Stormwater and Restoration Project.
Town Board Resolution 43368, award and authorize the supervisor to sign a contract for 2023 Silverado 1500 Crew RST four wheeler. What does RST stand for?
No idea.
Okay. With Buzz Choo Chevrolet Cadillac Incorporated.
Probably has like an off-road package.
Town Board Resolution ID 43273, authorize and award supervisor to sign a contract for invasive vegetative control and removal with Coastal Commercial Property Management. Town Board Resolution ID 43312, award and authorize the supervisor to sign a contract for 22, 2022 Ford F350 SRW. Again, I don't know what that means. Four-by-four super cab with Otis Ford Incorporated.
Just the trim package.
Town Board Resolution ID 43274, award and authorize the supervisor to sign a contract for 2022 Ford F250 Super Duty with open utility body with Otis Ford Incorporated. Town Board Resolution ID 43305, award and authorize the supervisor to sign a contract with Eastern Architect LLC for architectural and engineering services for Tupper Boathouse. Town Board Resolution ID 43418, the 2023 Notice to Bidders for Alwife Creek Habitat Enhancement Project.
43397, 2023 Notice to Bidders for Round Pond Stormwater Improvements. 43389, 2022 Fund Balance Allocation for Capital Borrowing as it relates to debt reduction So just remember that we have a policy in place where if we see unanticipated reserves that come in higher than the amount we anticipated in, in the budget, then 75% of that goes toward offsetting borrowing, anticipated borrowing. And that's, that's what this is doing. It's programming some of that money. You know, and different accounts have different reserves. Pretty much everything, with the exception, I think, of one fund, Waste Management. Everything came out with a balance above what we had predicted. You know, overall, it was significant delta, like 4 million, 4.7 million more than we had anticipated. So of that, 3.4 million will be taken to reduce what we were going to borrow this year. And that's reflected. So if you guys have any questions about how that is being spent, we could always bring Dorothy in too, which she's been advising me on that. 43348, accepts payment from Reckless Equity Development LLC for capital project sub-aquous crossing, crossing debt reduction. So that is part of that Canoe Place development, right? That they were going to initially put a valve in, that was an automated valve, if the pressure dropped. It had to do with fire suppression. But when we decided to do the second under, you know, under the canal water main, this was, this basically was the cost that the valve was going to cost is being applied. And so the CPI or Reckless Equity is providing the money to offset that project instead. 43412, amends the 2023 adopted budget for purchase of Bay Constable Vehicles. Jim, just a question, not on this, but part of the change in the PDD for Canoe Place Inn was that the taxes, property taxes on the boathouse, the differential between what they actually pay in property taxes, which was, you know, based on the hotel use, because we allowed it to be a hotel on that side versus, versus, I guess, the residential units, condominiums.
Right.
They had agreed to provide, I guess, the school and the firehouses with that difference.
If there was a difference in the assessment.
Somebody has to calculate it. I don't know that.
Yeah. I'll check with, I'll check with Lisa about that. I'm not quite sure that there would be a difference, quite frankly, but I'll check with Lisa.
Lisa supposed to calculate it.
Yeah.
There was, it was less as a, it was less as a hotel use.
I think it's like a hundred thousand dollar difference.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll check with her, right?
If you, yeah, if you could check on that.
Yeah, there's also tax revenue sharing, correct?
I don't know what you mean by that.
Hotel tax?
Hotel tax?
No.
That goes to the county? Do we see any of that?
The hotel tax, we don't see any of it.
We should.
I mean, our legislator, legislator Fleming, I mean, there, there are some, some of that money goes into a fund that gets spent on the East End, on arts, cultural arts and things like that. Not specifically to Southampton, but, but lots of organizations in Southampton benefit from that.
So all I'm suggesting is that we know the portion of that.
Yeah. But most of the money for hotel tax doesn't come back to our area, and the only real earmarks in that are for Discover Long Island and Darnaco Museum and Waltwoodly Museum. So everything else we sort of have to fight for.
Yeah.
43348, accepts payment from Reckless Equity. Did I do this?
Yep.
Yep.
We're on page 50.
Did I do 43412? Yeah. Did I read?
Yes.
Yes.
For the Bay Constable, Constable Vehicles. Okay, 43384 is Flanders North Southampton Volunteer Ambulance Core Service Award Program. Does anybody cosponsor any?
I'll cosponsor it. Good that we have it now.
Town Board Resolution 43390, reappoint Stephanie Davis to Landmarks and Historic Districts Board. Town Board Resolution 43391, appoint Stephanie Davis Vice Chair of the Landmarks and Historic Districts Board for 2023. Town Board Resolution 43392, appoint Edward Wesnovsky Chair of the Landmarks and Historics District Board for 2023.
38630, resolution to authorize... Oh, okay. Resolution to authorize eminent domain proceedings for the acquisition of property necessary for the improvement of a portion of Shinnecock Hills Road and Arvidus Road, Shinnecock Hills. Now, Jim, this one is, this is sort of like a friendly condemnation?
Yeah.
With the clear title?
Right. It's just, when we did the title report, I think really the only entity that may claim any type of title, title interest is this old corporation, the Shinnecock Hills Corporation. But in order to, for us to acquire complete clear title before we invest the money that we've invested in this road, the title company suggested we do our eminent domain proceeding. So that's what we're doing. So this just authorizes us to do the proceeding.
So this is just a quiet title, basically?
Exactly. Yeah, yeah.
All right.
We have the surveys done and we're, you know, we having the public hearing.
Yeah, otherwise we couldn't spend public money on building a road there on somebody else's property.
Right, right, right. We didn't want to risk that. We want to, yeah, of course, we want to get clear title, make sure we have clear title before we spend any money on it, so.
But this is really important, I believe, really important project.
Yeah, I think it is too, you know.
It's just like 130 homes back there that really need a safer passage.
Yep.
That this will provide.
And it does, it does provide another emergency route, you know, in, if necessary, if 39 is shut down.
I mean, it's, when there's an accident, 39, these people literally cannot get home to their children.
Right.
I know. Right, so this, this could provide a weight of route traffic.
Right. We've been, you know, wrestling with this for a while.
This is a one-way street going out, but in an emergency, it becomes, it goes the other direction. Absolutely. All right. 43337, resolution adoption, amending town code 330-77 to increase the permitted required rear yard lot coverage percentage. And we've discussed this, to go from 20% to, I think, 50%?
Yep. Town Board Resolution ID 43370, resolution of adoption, amending town code, Chapter 316, vehicles junked and abandoned in order to enhance enforcement of the law.
And this is the one where sort of boats and things like that. All right, looks like we're at 43414, accepts workforce housing payment for Canoe Place Inn Canal Eastern Maritime Plan Development District Hampton Bay. That one, what is that, Jim?
There.
I believe that, I guess it's a payment in lieu of providing housing, is what I'm assuming.
Mm-hmm. They didn't build a required portable unit.
To satisfy the Long Island workforce housing.
Right, which only applied when it was going to be residential, then we converted it to, but I guess it still predates that.
Mm-hmm.
So it goes back to when it was residential?
Yeah, I believe so, that's, yeah.
It has to do with the yield of the 37 townhouses.
Initially, they were looking to do the, have those as sales, as, right, the 37 townhouses.
I mean, it's a half a million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Now that will go into...
So...
It says Long Island Workforce Restricted Account. I don't know why it's called that. It should be the Community Housing Fund.
Mm-hmm.
I guess maybe that's what we...
I think that's what it's, we should check on that. Because that may be the county name for... I'm assuming that's what it is, but... Yeah.
Check's already in the vault, so once you adopt this, someone's coming for it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take the money. I know they, I don't believe they were trying to get around having to pay this by converting to commercial, so.
I mean, I think at the unit...
This was a requirement of the initial.
And it referenced... Well, they built 37 units, so I think it applies, you know.
It doesn't apply.
It would have applied if they sold or rented. As a, as a hotel, yeah, then maybe not, but...
No, I think it's because of the original approval. The original approval was residential on that side.
Yeah.
And they would have had to do...
But they also agreed to change it to, in order to change to hotel, they would pay whatever they needed to, to make it...
Yes.
The same as it would for the community.
Yeah, and it describes it in the resolution. Right.
All right. John, you're next.
Town Board Resolution ID 43364, authorization of cost reimbursement waiver for the East Quad Fire Department Memorial Day Parade on May 28th, 2023, from 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM.
Could I be added as this, Sunday?
Certainly.
43393, authorize the supervisor to sign documents for the transfer of sanitary flow credits as it relates to the site plan, special exemption. 43310, Neuyak Road, Neuyak. So that is for the affordable units, right?
Yeah. So we're citing flow credits on a property that's got special exemption?
Well, this is, is this one being done by the Housing Authority? I believe it is.
I think it is, because there's a request for 942 gallons a day sanitary flow credits. So, and it's the project applicant.
So they're building two townhouse buildings with four apartments each, and I think they're all affordable.
No. This is the corner of Berkshire and Neuyak?
This is 3310 Neuyak Road. The project consists of the construction of eight apartments, each not exceeding 600 square feet, to be located in two new townhouse buildings, four apartments per building, regulated by the Town of Southampton for Affordable Housing pursuant to 216.
All eight apartments will be regulated by the Town of Southampton for Affordable Housing pursuant to Chapter 216, Housing for Eligible Households.
I know there was, there was...
I'm a little confused with this.
There was a development that the Housing Authority was doing. You're saying, Tommy John, you think this is something that's a private development that's affordable?
Yes, it is. Well, and I don't know if it's entirely affordable.
Well, these...
A portion of it is, I believe. I need to read this, you know, to...
Yeah, this, I haven't seen this.
You know, this is, this is between Trout Pond and the Hamlet Center on a private home located on the north, northern side. That's going to be redesigned.
We'll get clarification.
So, yeah, my question is, you know, the, the develop, the, the flow credits and how many and... And how many are, are affordable? How many units are affordable in the, in the entire development here?
Well, yeah, I mean, we can only give these credits away for affordable housing.
All eight apartments will be regulated for affordable housing.
So there are eight apartments total?
That's what it says.
So I say I have to comb through it a bit.
Well, that, yeah, that's what I was reading, the second whereas, but then I'm also seeing additional tax credits or flow credits for... I'd have to talk to Kara.
I still think this may be a different project, one by the Housing Authority, but I can't tell just by the tax map.
Yeah, we have to ask.
All right, we just need more information on that. Let's move on.
This is, this is not the Housing Authority. It's on the north side of Neuyak Road between Trout Pond and, and Hamlet Center on the corner of Berkshire and Neuyak Road. So, you know, it's a private residence. So, and I'm really happy that affordable units are going to be going in here. So we keep it on.
Who's the developer? Who's the developer? Do you know?
I do. I, I, I think it's Judge Burke.
It's three, three, ten, Noyac Road LLC, isn't it? Okay, the company? Okay, we need affordable, so. All right, four, three, three, six, nine. Authorize the waiver of fees for the Southampton Fire District. What is this for?
Building a substation or a new firehouse or substation.
They're seeking to construct a new firehouse?
Mm-hmm, water mill.
I need to look at this more carefully here. So this is the Southampton Fire District, which right now contracts with the village, I believe, to provide fire services. They're seeking to construct a new firehouse at?
In Watermill.
At three, ten, okay, I know that property that they bought, there's a home there. The town authorized waiver, okay. So we're waiving the, what the?
The land management and municipal works.
Of eighteen thousand dollars. I mean, it'd be nice if we could get updated as to what that fire district is doing, but they, they... Is that going to be their main firehouse?
No, I don't believe so. I think they just need coverage in the western end.
I think it's a substation.
District, yeah, or the eastern end of the district.
But they also own a property on, uh...
North Sea Road.
Where.
But this, right now, everything runs out of the village and, you know, they're covering a lot of stuff.
Right, right now, the village and, I'm sure the village is going to continue to provide fires. It's going to be years before they have equipment, firehouses and everything else where they could do it themselves. And volunteers, which we know is getting harder and harder. I just would like them to update us.
Surely ask them to come in or provide us with an update.
We could. Do we know who the head of the, the head of the fire commissioners are?
I believe they all have equal jurisdiction. But, yeah, we could probably get some of the folks in to give us an update.
One of the Southampton Fire Commissioners to come in.
Yeah, Tommy, John, do you want to work on that?
Okay.
All right, uh, four, three, three, six, three. Release of performance bond in connection with the planned residential development cluster plan of Mill Creek Heights, also known as Sag Harbor Woods in Noyac.
Four, two, five, seven, six. Twenty, twenty-three junkyard permits.
And four, two, eight, one, two is twenty, twenty-three part-time salaries. Forty, three, oh, eight, three. Accepts resignation of a senior office assistant in municipal works.
Senior office assistant?
Yes.
I thought she was staying.
I think she's transferred.
She's transferred?
Yes.
All right. Uh, fourth, uh, four, three, three, one, four. Accepts resignation of a senior office assistant in the police department. Four, three, three, two, one. Accepts resignation of a heavy equipment operator in highway department. Four, three, two, nine, oh. Appoints Maria Cabrera to custodial worker one, position in municipal works. Four, three, 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 two. Have we?
Mm-hmm.
Discuss salary? Discussing salary? All right, uh, this, this resolution appoints Tracy Coulson to use services coordinator position in police bureau. Four, three, three, five, one. Authorizes attendance at the police executive research forum annual meeting in New York City from July seventeenth through nineteenth, twenty-three. Four, three, four, one, six. Authorized drug court judge and personnel to attend the National Association of Drug Court Professionals conference. Four, three, four, one, nine. Is a notice of public hearing to consider the acquisition of developer rights at seven, seventy-one. And, uh, seven, ninety-one, Sagaponic. Is that a post office box? What is that?
Part of.
A part of, a part of, thank you. Seven, ninety-one, Sagaponic Main Street and part of one thirty-five Gibson Lane. Twenty-six and part of sixty Daniels Lane, village of Sagaponic and amends C P F management and stewardship plan to include the properties.
Town Board Resolution ID four, three, one, eight, seven. Notice of public hearing to consider the inclusion of one forty West Montauk Highway into the Hampton Bays Park District.
Just, just hold on one second. So that public hearing in Sagaponic, that is that horse farm property?
Yep.
I don't know, it's not necess, is it, yeah, Toppin, yeah. Toppin Farm. We had discussed this a long time ago.
Yeah. Yeah, it was quite a bit, because it was, um...
So many properties involved?
Yeah, a number of different family members involved, so it was a very complicated contract process.
This is a ten million dollar acquisition. No, I, I remember we, we had an agreement, I just, we, we haven't done it yet. We haven't held the hearing. So this hearing is June thirteenth.
It was, it was a while to get everybody in contract, because it's different family members.
Yeah.
And I was, at least, I was intuitively, it was quite complicated, and then Dan has picked it up since then, it's, but.
No, it's a, it's a beautiful property. All right, so I, Rick, did you read?
Yeah, yes, we did that one.
Town Board Resolution ID four, three, four, two, four. Hearing to amend town code chapter three, twelve, dash, sixty-two. Implement a parking by permit only pilot program at Wildwood Lake Park for weekends and federal holidays, Memorial Day, Juneteenth, Independence Day, Labor Day from May fifteenth to September fifteenth for a one-year period.
I'd like to be a cosponsor of that, please.
Can I just rewind to the other one that we had, Rick? The four, three, one, eight, seven, that public hearing. One forty West Montauk Highway, that, that sounds like that new building we built.
The, it's the old chamber building. We tore down the chamber building, not approving the property. They have to base beautification, so improvements on it as far as flower beds and.
They need parks, the park district to maintain it.
Which one do you want to be a cosponsor?
Four, three, four, two, four.
Do we want to put it in the parks district?
So that they can pay to maintain the stuff that the beautification puts in?
Well, we can do that now through the whole town. This will put it in the Hampton Bays only payment.
We need to look at the western end of Good Grounds Park and the possible entrance and exit.
Well, it's just that, and we're also trying to work on a redevelopment plan for downtown Hampton Bays and, you know, that property, you know, may end up being municipal parking or something like that. The old chamber building. So I just don't know if that complicates our efforts.
Because we'd have to do park alienation if we wanted to use it in that way?
It's for a public hearing, so we can have a discussion and figure it out.
Perch is the property under open space, I believe.
It was an open space bond, it wasn't a C P F.
Yeah, this is just for a public hearing. We can have this discussion.
I, I understand.
No, I know, all I'm saying.
I get it.
I just, I'm just not sure it's the right thing to do. I, I know that the beautification association is, I think they had a donation from somebody to do plantings on that property. We weren't going to the taxpayers, I didn't believe.
No, it wasn't. It's to maintain it because parks, because the, the Hampton Bays Park District will contract out to have a landscaping company that does all of the entrance ways and all of that stuff, maintain it so that the Parks Department doesn't have to.
Does it interfere with the municipal planning of downtown Hampton Bays? For me, is, is the question, you know, because there's a lot of things up in the air. I like the idea, conceptually, and I'm not, you know, debating it.
I mean, I think even if it's in the parks, then it's a municipal lot, they can still beautify the parking lot.
I, I don't know if it's going to be a lot.
I don't think the proposed road from the most recent plan went through that property.
Right.
No, but.
And that's the stuff I need to.
Yeah, I mean, we'll have to go through that. If we need to get to Cemetery Road, we'll have to use a portion of that.
So why don't we hold it out for a year and wait?
How do you get to Cemetery Road from that property?
You don't, you have to also get a piece of the Methodist, the church there too. Then you can get to Cemetery Road, but Cemetery Road's a private road. I don't know if we can use Cemetery Road, but you still could have a municipal parking lot that is tied into the development plans, the downtown development plans. It just makes it complicated our efforts.
So why don't we hold off on this until we decide we're doing it?
Yeah, I think we should at least talk to Janice about it.
Yeah.
Frank was working very closely with Susan von Freddy.
Yeah, but I, the funding it this way, what is it, three thousand dollars? We, but, well, we don't have to complicate our efforts. Anyway, it's a public hearing, we can, don't have to pass it.
It's just to make it look nice.
Okay, um, John, why don't you read the next one? Oh, we already did the next one.
We did that one already, yeah. And all, just for the board, this is an agreement that we've always had with Wildwood for a number of years now, so this is just some amendments to that, particularly for parking on holidays and certain weekends.
But this is, now it's a church that owns it.
Yeah, we're making some changes this year in preparation of the church doing some repairs. And then we have to figure out a, a new agreement or a new way to release this down the road.
So the churches said they would manage the parking there?
No.
No, no.
No.
I'm confused.
No, it's still.
No, we're trying to preserve parking for Wildwood Park.
The, the same agreement is still in place. This, this is just an amendment, section E.
For permit.
Yeah, it's essentially, it's a, a separate, for this year, the church is not going to be using in any way this, the property this year. They're going to be, they're starting the reconstruction of their, actually replacing, the first thing they know is replacing the roof on the building. They'll not, they won't be using the parking area at all for this year, so. Well, we used to have before the bowling alley, the guy was operating the bowling alley, kind of monitored the park, parking there. So we, we won't have anybody there this year, so. The best way to, to do this for this year is to have town, town permit parking for the area that'll keep control of the parking.
Yeah.
And we'll have our P D and T C O go through there to make sure that.
Which ironically was what we originally wanted to do, but to work with.
Yeah, yeah, we just have, we have this issue that when this property was purchased, we had these cross easements for the parking, so that's something that happened a half a year ago.
So now is that a change? In the past, you didn't have to have a town parking permit to park there. They charged some, you, you were charged if you didn't, right?
If you didn't have it, you got charged, right, but that was when there was.
That's when they had personnel there.
Bowling alley operator was present.
Now we don't have that.
This year, there's not going to be anybody present, so we have to take over full control over the regulation of the parking of the property. So, but this year, we do the parking by permit, and then for this year, the church will not be using the property at all this year other than to, you know, maybe park for maintenance workers.
So that is a change. So somebody who's been paying to use it, he doesn't have a parking permit, won't be able to park there this year.
That's correct.
We should have plenty of people out there in the first couple of weekends.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Now, we know that, yeah, we, we work, we've met with P D. on this, and they're aware and we understand, yeah.
It's a popular spot.
It is.
It is a popular spot. It also generates a fair amount of complaints.
I wonder if we shouldn't create a parking permit for Wildwood or people to pay necessarily, not necessarily let you go to all the town beaches, but.
Well, the problem is that you don't have personnel there to check anything. It's the only thing that's.
I think you have a lot of out-of-town users.
Peaceably noted, yeah, and that, that's what happens.
Well, but you're making a town, we're making a town parking permit only, somebody's got to check that, so.
Well, that's what P D. does.
What I'm suggesting is you could have, like, for a hundred bucks or fifty bucks, a special sticker for Wildwood. It's all, you know. There might, there may be people from the Riverhead area that use this, have always used this part, you know, and they paid by the day that will not be able to use it now.
Yeah, well, it's, it's, it's weekends and, and holidays. It's not, it's not going to be enforced on weekdays.
It's just weekends and holidays?
Yeah.
I'm just afraid that now they're going to park on the street or?
Uh, well, right.
That's the good sir.
You know, we have talked to some of the community members around there, and we are concerned about that could be the unintended impact of this, that there might be more overflow parking on the streets, but P D. was there and.
But that's why the idea of having a, I mean, somebody has to administer it, but you'd have to, whatever, pay your fifty bucks and you get a, a decal to park it that lot.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it is a public hearing, so we'll, yeah, we'll work that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll go through that.
Yeah, it's, um, it's an issue, but.
It's, it would, well, it was an issue originally, that's why we started this, and we were fortunate to have.
And, you know, and it's a difficult site, and our park director has concerns about the site in general.
Yeah.
It just, it just happens to be near a border in town and, you know, it's.
Well, we had Wildwood Boeing Alley, which was, they, they were really good in helping us with this issue. It hasn't been an issue, but now it's going to become one for obvious reasons.
You know, residents of Planters Riverside use a lot of Riverhead parks. And I, I just want to make sure that we're not creating a situation where they'll start getting shut out of Riverhead facilities. Anyway, we can, we can talk about it. Four, three, four, oh, eight. Authorize C P F acceptance of the transfer and donation of the Ellis Squire House property Hampton Bays, terminate stewardship agreement with the tonic historic preservation, Inc., and amend C P F project plan and C P F stewardship and management plan to include the property. Actually, we had held the hearing on this a very long time ago.
Yes.
Lisa Combray.
Was it, what, what year was it?
Could I be added as a cosponsor?
So.
Wait, where was, where was the hearing held, was it?
On March.
Was it in March of twenty-two?
Well, we, we designated the Squire's House as a historic.
Yeah, March, March twenty-two, yeah. Public hearing.
In two thousand and seven, and then we had a resolution in two thousand and seventeen, a histories here on the.
Yeah, I, I actually went back and watched the hearing to refresh my memory. But, yeah, this, this is a really important property, and we had given it to a not-for-profit, you know, and they were trying to get money. We hadn't, actually, they were just managing it for us, and they tried to get money from the Gardner Foundation to fix it up. And Gardner Foundation really won't give it unless the not-for-profit owns it. And then we realized that, like, C P F Fund could fix it up. So the hearing we held was basically to cancel the agreement with the not-for-profit and, and then give the property to C P F, which also owns the property next door, and then have C P F restore this house. It's the oldest house in Hampton Bays, and it's, I think it's on the national registry. So it's a, it's an important piece of property that really deserves to be better cared for, and this will give it that ability. But if anybody, you know, I welcome you guys to go back and get on the town's website and review that public hearing. If you, you may not have been here, I don't remember, but, um, nobody spoke against it. Lisa Combray did a really nice job presenting.
Yeah, we had pictures that day, and, you know, I've walked the place too. It's, it needs to be preserved.
Okay, so, and are there more? Just.
You have one, Adam.
So four, three, four, two, nine. Authorize the supervisor to execute any and all documents pertaining to the port security grant for use in the Bay Principals Division.
For a new boat. To offset the cost of a new boat.
It's an expensive boat.
So it's a, the.
Well, to, I believe, to get that homeland securities grant, they have to meet certain requirements on the boat, which may cause.
Yeah, well, we have to come up with a hundred eighty-seven thousand, but they, the grant request is for five hundred sixty-one. And what type of boat is this?
It's a patrol boat, I believe.
All right. All right, anything else on the agenda? Everybody okay with it?
Yep.
Yep.
All right, Sandy, you're.
Free to go. Thank you.
Run, run like the wind.
Are you, are you ready for this?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yeah, no, we're ready. All right, so, um, all right, so we're a little behind schedule. So, um, next we're going to talk about wireless communication structures, and we are joined by a number of people. We have Len Marchesi, our former, former controller. We have Len Marchesi, our former, former controller, controller, who's been consulting on a number of projects, including this.
Tom? Tom. Oh, you do? Well, we got another.
All right, we also have Janice Shearer, our Town Planning and Development Administrator.
Tom says he's good over there. He has nothing to add.
We also have Tom.
His, his opinion is important, come on.
Tom Houghton is here, he's our town engineer. We also, we also have former town board member Julie Lobst in the audience, who also is here representing commercial fishing interests. And then we have.
Are they not here yet, Len?
Kito. Okay. So we have Keith Kito, who will be here in a second with Power Point.
Hope this works last minute.
You are?
Laurel Mooney.
Laurel?
Yes.
L O U R E L?
Yes.
All right, Laurel Mooney. M O O N E Y?
Yep.
And your whiz?
Uh, Tower Point.
And you must be Keith.
Charles is like, do you want anything else?
Hey, Mike left, okay?
Keith, you and I have spoken a number of times on my phone.
Do some bagels.
There's only one, there's only one thing though.
I'll make it work, man.
Wait, can, can we afford a better easel? I'm not asking you.
These are all other just simulations.
Thank you.
The simulations for the town are in the presentation and in the videos. This is time to show how the flag bowls.
Okay.
All right, so we're going to be talking about cell towers, cellular communications.
Yeah, I, I.
Yeah, you want to introduce us here?
I'll introduce, I'll make Janice, I'll make whatever. Uh, Tom, four months ago, five months ago, we developed the concept to put out an RFP for cell tower providers to give us some proposals at various town sites. Because there's been a need in several areas of the town for additional service. So we, we issued a RFP, we got back four or five different proposals from different vendors, and we had a committee internally that met and reviewed all the proposals. And we narrowed it down to Tower Point as the best option for the town. Their proposals seemed the most fiscally advantageous, and the design seemed to be what we were looking for. And so we asked them to come in, they further fine tuned their proposal, and we talked about what we were looking for. Janice laid out some of the parameters regarding, like, the planning board and what, what our requirements are and stuff like that. And then they came back with a final kind of site plan.
No, and that is really, the idea is to have, and always in the Wireless Master Plan, it was advocated that the board look at revenue options utilizing town property where it makes sense, where we need the signal to allow for emergency communications, and produce revenue which offsets the taxpayer burden, so for services and different things that we need down here in the town. So with that, Keith can explain.
Can I ask you a couple of questions or bring?
Sure, absolutely.
Cell towers are not necessarily the purview of the town, or any municipality, private individuals can have them erected on their property if they meet the special exemption standards. Right?
Yes, that's absolutely correct. So most times what happens is, you know, a carrier or a company will seek to put in an application to the planning board on private property for, oh, you know, wireless communication tower or some type of infrastructure. In the Wireless Master Plan, we talk about how that should be done and where. There's avoidance areas, there's opportunity areas. We lay out, like, the high points in the town and talk about, like, if you had a tall building, you could put antennas on there, and, and then there's, you know. The public side of this is you have even more control when you're the landlord, and that's the truth. Like, if you are controlling the actual parcel, then you, you have regulatory control on a planning board, but there's only so far you can go because there's all these FCC rules.
That's the benefit of the town.
And shot clocks, yes. So the benefit of the town doing it is A, you get revenue, and B, you have even more control because you are laying out what you want in a lease structure.
And we are in the business of, we have a bunch of cell tower agreements currently in various places throughout the town.
Okay, we had one go up in, in Watermill on a private property in the past.
Yes.
Past year, and they went to the planning board, through our code and.
Just one right on County Route thirty-nine on top of Corville.
Right. Okay, thank you. I, I don't want the public to think that this is just a thing that, that cellphone towers are a thing that the town does or the municipality does. It can be done by private as well as public entities.
Yes, but your, the wireless policies that have been adopted by previous boards that unless you change them, those are the policies, and the policies say, you know, work with people when they come in to try to do, you know, installations on public property. But instead of even doing that, because we got inundated with people who were like, how about here, how about there? We put out a bid and said, these are the two locations that you might consider, which is the commercial dock and the transfer station. And those, instead of everybody, you know, and most places are not, it doesn't make sense, but these two places particularly do. So now we'll see what they've come with.
One last question, private individuals that have cell towers on private property, they make revenue off of that cell tower, right? You guys probably dress that.
Yep.
Just laying that out for the public.
Yeah, and here the revenue goes back to the town, so the town is able to, you know, use that to offset other financial.
Yeah, even in this, in this area, the town of Southampton, I think, has the most land, right? And if you look at all the other resident, there's a lot of residential property. So even though it's private property, the residential properties are not going to be really suitable for a cell tower, nor will they want it. So we look at the town property as probably the best property to do, to build out here within the town of Southampton.
Okay.
And you brought a very good point, we're dealing with another town where if you have private property next to government land, they actually almost force you to build on government land. And this is on Long Island, so we're betting with that, and we have a meeting next week about that.
They force you what, to use the residential as commercial?
Uh, no, they actually want you off the private property onto the public land, which we, we disagree with because you're like, public entity taken away from private enterprise, right? So.
So you come in on the, you come in with an application on the private.
We came in on the private, and they're like, no, we kind of want it over there, and we're like, whoa, hold on.
This was their planning board.
They're taking revenue from them.
They're taking, and, you know, and this is, yeah, they could suggest, and this is a large property, and he's being like, this is insane they're doing this, you know?
But we've been doing stuff with municipal entities and quasi-government since the nineties. Our first cell tower was with the Town of Babylon in nineteen ninety-nine or something like that. And we've done all their beaches, Overlook, Gilgo, Venetian Shores, Town Hall. There's a whole list of different municipalities that we've, we've, we've worked with.
And back then it wasn't flag bowls either, so.
One was, yeah.
So.
But, so we kind of.
Why don't you go through?
The proposal.
Your proposal and talk about what you're offering and.
Now, we put out a bid and we, and that's why, okay, so we're all clear.
How does that?
It's a good question.
You could say change next slide or try to do it.
Uh, next slide.
Big sign.
So this is just a quick overview of us, we're full turnkey. Everything's done inside financing, development, construction, and management. Next slide. Bringing all the partners together, a hundred fifty-plus years of knowledge, six hundred-plus deployments, seven hundred sites under management. So that's very good for talking with the carriers. You know, if there's a one-off, you know, cell tower owner, the carriers don't really care, you know? When you have a large portfolio, you can really leverage the higher rent, and also carriers want, actually, like a firm that knows what they're doing, you know? Because it's.
We're local, so.
Local, and et cetera. And we've done a hundred twenty-five plus ground up developments. That's macro sites, so full cellphone towers, not, we're not talking rooftops, we're talking actual cellphone towers. Next slide. So this is, the first one we're doing is a transfer station, so.
The details on.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, we proposed two heights here. After talking with the carriage, we actually wanted to go to one forty off the bat, and that is because of high interest. And we'll actually, so what we want to do is actually show combined revenue. So if we just started with a one twenty, combined revenue is around four point four. If we go with a one forty, we can get more, more, more carriers on, and it can double up. And it actually brings in around almost two million dollars more.
That's over how long?
Uh, that's a ten-year period. Uh, that's actually including also the twenty-five X that we did as a buyout value. So what that means is you guys have a revenue stream, so you can actually sell that revenue stream to us, and we'll buy it out, right? But then you get no more revenue. So if you want to cash, a large cash influx, you can sell it to us. Even in our agreements, we'll have a rofer, write a first refusal, and that's just because we want to protect our assets. If we're going to be investing in the tower, we want to make sure no one can come in and literally buy the ground underneath and steal our asset if our lease runs out.
But we don't know that we would actually, like, parcellize it and give it away either.
Oh, yeah, of course not.
Yeah, no, you don't have to, it's just, it's just another option if the town needs to.
Okay, because most likely we keep the public property public and that's that.
Is that what they call it?
Yeah, they like lateralize the tobacco settlement.
Yeah, tobacco settlement.
The future revenue streams of. Yeah, it's, it's a backdoor county mechanism.
Yeah, it becomes a one-shot.
Put fifty mil, you know, like, I'll take it.
No, it isn't, our, our plan, and my recommendation would be to use the stream, the, the, the long-term income stream to help support the commercial, not this one, but the, the one that we're talking about in the commercial fishing area, to use that revenue stream to support maintaining that and improving that facility.
But here, could we use some of the revenue in lease management? Because that transfer station is one of the few that is not, you know, it's run, it's an enterprise fund, but it's not meeting.
It's not meeting the definition of an enterprise.
Well, it's running on a deficit.
Yeah, well, yeah, the general fund subsidizes that operation. So, yeah, you could, the town, obviously, the board will can decide on how you want to allocate the revenues, that's, that's one of your options.
But it's similar in that way to the commercial dock.
Yeah.
We don't have to self-sustain, so.
Off of that, I will say, we did talk with Andrew Hints, who does the town communications. For the North Sea Transfer Station, it's not a hundred percent needed the extra height for public communications. That's as of currently, but you never know in the future. So for this one, this is really for cell carriers.
All right, so we're not putting emergency communications.
So the one twenty would work, in other words, you don't really necessarily have to go full out one forty, even though it's more revenue.
It's more revenue. I just want to show the difference, yes, but this one is actually for really strictly cell carriers for the, at the moment.
Are these designed, can you go, unless you built one twenty, could you add another twenty feet to it later?
Correct, yeah, so we can, we can engineer it, so where if another carrier wants to jump on, we have it engineered to go up to one forty. And that includes the foundation and everything.
You could build it at one twenty, but it, you built it one twenty, but later expanded.
Correct, correct.
So Janice, at North Sea, this wouldn't interfere with our solar arrays, our.
No, no, it's all been designed to work together.
We did that at Village of Thomaston, Village Hall, and North Babylon Fire Department. We went up twenty feet at Thomaston, and then I think another thirty at North Babylon.
Is it possible to put emergency communications on the pole?
At the top, yes, we always reserve the top.
Okay.
It's always reserved and it's completely for free.
For a police department if they want.
Police, fire department, volunteer, ambulance, et cetera. All right, next slide.
So, and, and it's all communications only, or does it go into microwave range?
It's, it's really up to what they would need. So it's, it's, you brought that up, because they do need a relay at the fishing dock, and that's the Southampton Fire District.
Yeah.
So. And that's just a simple simulation of where it would be. It's kind of dark, but you can see there's a hill on the back, that's where I believe the solar array is going, I did, on top of the dump, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so we're kind of, we're at the bottom of it in that, it's like a cleared area surrounded by trees.
Yeah, no, I know the spot.
It's a pretty good location, it's, building-wise, it's, construction-wise, it's actually got its flag, it's easy.
It's close to where we had the fire.
There was a fire?
There was a fire, yeah.
Truck, one of our trucks.
One of the trucks went on fire.
Would you go?
Actually, my husband, the first week he worked at some county water authority, his truck went on fire. Like, only you.
Next slide.
Is that like a one twenty or a one forty that was?
That, that's actually simulated as one forty, we could go with one forty for that.
Well, that's one forty, okay. So if you did one twenty, it would be lower, obviously.
It will be, yeah. The trees, the trees there are about seventy-five feet tall, whether or not, yeah. They're substantial, yeah.
Okay.
Next slide as well.
Go back one, maybe?
Go back.
That's sort of where it's, the pole's going.
Go back one, please.
So just to get oriented, uh.
And this is all facing north.
There's like that trailer kind of right in front of it, right? That's the trailer?
Uh, to the south, to the south, and that's where their office is.
Existing building, yeah.
And this area is currently cleared?
Uh, it's, if, well, if you had a fire, I was wondering why it was like kind of new growth trees.
No, it was, it was in front of the building.
Oh, okay.
So the, the area, where's the, where's the pole, in the?
Directly in the middle of that compound, that circle is where.
Where the black dot is?
Yeah.
It's scrub growth in there right now.
It was cleared recently.
Yeah, it's not.
Any reason that's clear, is it just, was it?
Uh, it was previously cleared and we maintained it.
Oh, okay.
Doing something with it.
It's a perfect spot.
It is, yeah, it's, uh, that is, yeah.
Okay.
Next slide. We're showing what the one forty. Next slide.
So it is like three whips at the top?
Oh, yes. Actually, could you go back one?
Is that for the emergency communications or?
Yeah, so we, it's just to show it, it's reserved. Emergency equipment, they use whip antennas, the carriers are all internal with antennas, so it's going to be.
So it wouldn't even have those unless the police asked for it, right?
Correct.
TBW or whatever.
I do know Suffolk County did build that new tower about a mile southeast of this location.
So they might not need it.
I don't think they do, I don't. If anything, it would be the fire department, but Andrew of IWT said this is not going to be needed at the moment.
Okay.
But it is needed for cell carriers, obviously.
Cell carriers, yeah.
Cell carriers are desperate right here, yeah.
They are.
And it won't interfere with that other pole that, at a mile south.
Oh, no.
No.
No, the cell service is terrible in that area. Okay.
Next slide.
When you do these, do you do RF studies or do you?
We can do a full propagation map, even we, we actually did it for, we did it, we did that, we did an RF map for this.
Did you give it to us?
I did, I don't know, is it?
I mean, I know.
We've done so much stuff already, I, I forget, you know?
I know it's needed in that area, but like in terms of, do you guys know from the carriers that they've requested? Like, you're not going to build this, and then nobody's going to take.
Oh, yeah, of course, yeah. We have.
We're not putting users a headache or us, if they don't want it, for sure.
We need the carriers, the carriers are spending a lot of money.
We will definitely have somebody.
You've done some kind of business needs analysis, right?
Exactly, yes. And until we truly have a full lease, it's, it's kind of like, all right, we're word of mouth saying, yeah, we'll do this, we'll do that, you know?
And under the contract, you pay entirely for the cost of putting it up?
Everything, yes.
And you don't? Do you get that back, or do you just get your percentage eventually, get it?
No, through a percentage, yeah. And we also include a capital contribution once we get a CO from the town. That's just cash for the town to use as they wish. So for the North Sea, that's two hundred twenty-five thousand.
Right, that's just a straight out payment, and then it's we also get the rent.
Yeah, so we don't, we don't cut your rent. Yeah, so we don't, we don't cut your rent if, you know, I know there's some other agreements that might say, hey, we're going to actually, we want to cut your rent until we get our capital, you know, our construction costs back. We don't do that.
You pay us upfront?
Yeah.
Okay, and you pay for the cost of putting it up?
Every, yep, that's correct. Except lawyer fees, whatever you guys have to deal on your end, we don't cover that.
Jim, sorry, Jim's not expensive.
What, what kind of power rate consume?
We just need 200 watts, it's, it's nothing crazy. Yeah, the thing's got to be submetered for the carriers.
We bring in the upfront electric, so we'll have, you know, six meters, five meters for, for the carriers.
Yeah, we have some difficulty tapping into the LIPA grid, as you guys have probably-
Well, we're having all that worked out with the solar right now, so that actually works out, wow.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm thinking, but 200, you know, we'd have to see what the allocation is for our local resources.
Is it three-phase or just?
Believe it or not, we don't need three-
You don't need three-phase.
We don't. It's very, very low power. We do put generators, if the carriers request a generator, so I don't know if that's going to be an issue at all. Sometimes say like no propane or they need to be gassed.
No, those are just emergency?
Emergency, that's either-
Power outage during a storm.
Because of the, the case-
There's batteries with the solar, too, right?
But the normal power is just straight, straight from the-
Oh, yes, yeah. And everything's submetered, so we put plenty of meter back, so if the fire department does want to jump on, it's very easy for them to, you know, jump on out.
So Janice, we really need to check that allocation, because we're like at, at five megawatts right now. We really need to be, I don't know what the allocation is, we're going to give for residents in that area to make this project work with a developer.
We might, usually we just-
No, they're, well, I mean, they're bringing, they're working out all the-
Well, because it's saying here it's coming off of a, it's a tap into a utility pole.
Yeah, so what we'll do is add another transfer, usually we add a transformer.
We don't, we won't know exactly where we're tapping into, we have a meeting with PSEG.
Just need to protect this, this project, our, our solar array, the first one that-
No, yeah, there's no conflict.
Okay. Consumption-wise?
Consumption-wise.
Okay.
In fact, you're generating renewable energy here, so, um-
No, how much is being taken, tapped from this?
Yeah, but I mean, you're producing, you're going to be producing.
Right, but we also have this allocated for-
So they're, they're-
The utility, you pay the utility.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, no conflict as far as I'm aware.
It's submetered, so the carriers do. But if we have equipment there, or if we're with the fire department, sometimes we do pay for it. It's such a, it's a-
Well, we don't have, we have no, all rent is straight out, and we have no expenses that-
Correct.
Get deducted from.
Yeah. The key word is gross revenue share. You know, some people might sneak in net, you know? And then they'll be like, oh, yeah, well, I said net revenue share, and they go in $30,000 in expenses.
Yeah, and then subtle, so little subtle differences make huge difference.
So we maintain it, maintenance, landscapers, all that stuff, to make sure it looks nice and-
Paint it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Annual-
And, yeah, and ours is off the, the gross.
Yeah.
Let's go to the next one. So we did two, two things here for the fishing dock. We did want to show the 50-foot. For 50-foot, what we originally proposed was $75,000 capital contribution, combined revenue, 1.8, and that's with the 10-year, 10-year revenue plus a buyout of 25X. But then when we talked to Andrew Hints of IWT, they did say that Southampton Fire District would need 100 feet for their communications. And he's like, it very likely as well, the volunteer ambulance would need to be on as well, right? But he confirmed 100 feet for their equipment up the top of the tower.
100 feet, no, because I thought this was going to be 75 feet, so it's going to be 100 feet?
Well, I guess the RFP said 50 feet, right?
Yeah, RFP was 50.
Which is not really worth kind of anything, because each person has like a 10-foot section, so you go from 50 to 40 feet, and then once you go from 40 to 30, no, no carrier is going to want that, that lower section. So that would be a one-carrier pole as well. And then the fire department also said they needed 100 feet, so.
And we could, we could always push back, and Andrew's saying it's 100 feet, 100% needed. He could come back and say, actually, we can get away with like 85, right? Something like that. But that's going to be further down the line of exactly what is needed. But I will, from 50 feet to 100, all the carriers can jump on 100 feet, right? So you'll see, that's why we even doubled the capital contribution from 75,000 to 150,000.
And the carriers are asking to go there? Because like, I, I'm an AT&amp;T, but I have no problem with cell communications in that area.
So it varies per carrier. During the summer, it's going to be a capacity issue, especially with Ponton Park Beach, the inlet.
Oh, I see, yeah, I haven't checked that out.
Yeah, so it, you know, if you go there, like, I was there, I was there in the, just, you know, a month ago, you know, the beautiful day, you have service, because there's no one out here, right? And then when everyone comes and everyone has an iPad, an iPhone, a Mac, it, it changes.
We, we have that problem with internet, too.
Yeah, they're trying to watch like YouTube on the beach, and everybody's doing that in TikTok and Snapchat.
Exactly, you know, people are uploading, now the cameras are crazy, you know, like a Snapchat video is like one gigabyte. You think about that like 10 years ago, that was a full movie a gigabyte. Now they're uploading like a one-gigabyte video of them on the beach in seconds, right? It's crazy, the power.
Shaking.
It's just changed so much, you know?
Right, and so I just have to wrap my head around 100 feet. I, I, you know, in my head, I was going to say this one should be 75 feet, you know? Because it's about 75 feet from the dock, from the water?
It's 100 feet what they're proposing, where they're put, where they're going to put the tower.
Yeah, so we do have, and that was, you brought up, it is 100 feet from the bulkhead.
It's 100 feet from the bulkhead? But now, 100 feet is taller, I think the, the tower at the end of the road is 75, roughly. There's a tower there, Coast Guard, I think, has a tower there.
Oh, you're talking on the other side of the Ponton Park Bridge? No, that tower?
No, no, that's really tall.
That's like, as I say, that's like 300, I think it's like 400 feet.
At the inlet.
No, I'm talking about out by the inlet.
It's a trust tower.
Okay.
Is it, yeah, what'd you call it?
Uh, trusses, it's got a series of trusses.
No, I think that's like a, a radio beacon for the, the, you guys, I think it's like a laran signal. Yeah, on a jetty. Something, it's not-
It's like a White House.
But it's gonna, it's gonna be more than that, because this is a flood zone.
I hate that, it's 70, 75 feet, but-
This is a flood zone, so this is going to have to-
But you have, you have a, you have a visual, it at 100?
At 100, yes.
Okay, I'd like to see that, so.
Well, does that, but could I ask a question on that? Does that include consideration of the FEMA flood zone? Your, your need to bring this power and control up at a certain level above ground because it's a flood zone?
Yeah, so the, the foundation, tower-
So it's more than 100 feet?
No, because we're going to have all the power and fiber raised up.
Raised up, that's what I-
The foundation can, it's, everything's going to be above.
So you're going to just move it up, perfect.
The bottom of the tower can get wet.
One of the major upgrades that we did on the fishing, you can see it right there, is, uh, on the commercial dock are the, uh, the, the electric. All the electric meters are in that house. That was on ground level. That's been all redone and then raised to FEMA standards as well.
Yeah, that's, I measured it, bottom of that, platform is eight feet.
Nice job, right?
Yeah, it's actually very clean, I don't know if we did that, but it was clean built.
So that's what it's going to look like?
It's, that's what we're going to, around, propose somewhere around like there.
All the gear, everything has to be at that level.
Up at a cer, at a certain level.
You can't disguise it to look like a White House. In perfectness. Hidden base used to have a White House.
We have to do that all along, Dune Road, like Tanya, the same way. That was a big-
It'd look great, wouldn't it?
We got a, is it Gurney's or Montauk Club? There's a, a little White House that has AT&amp;T in it.
I don't, I, oh, um, I don't want one, yeah.
How about a tree?
A tree, yeah, a tree on the beach.
So it's funny, so we, we had a village in the North Shore-
You put an Osprey in that.
That said, you know, he wants the tree, wants the tree. We're like, we're not doing the tree.
Right.
Because we heard nightmares about it. So then Verizon said, all right, we'll do the tree. And lo and behold, the branch fell on the mayor's car.
So is, if we have fall-
It's a metal branch, too, right?
Yeah, it's, it's terrible.
It's windy there.
We have fall radius laws, too.
It's going to look like a flagpole.
Compliant with that as well.
Correct, yeah.
These are the ones that telescope down if there should be something.
They fall, right?
So, yeah, so, I call it kinking, when they fail, there's going to be a tower class three that can withstand, I believe it's, is it 145 or 155 mile per hour?
So it's 145, but then the gusts are different with the public safety.
And then can add in the-
Yeah, I got to check mine.
Yeah, but there's also variables of ice and stuff. So 100, say 135 mile per hour winds in Long Island, we're going to be, there's going to be a lot more for a lot of people to worry about, right? But what happens is they kink about at the midpoint, so it just gets the wind load off. So they don't fall.
So falls.
It fall, yeah, falls, or I call it like a kink.
Bends?
Yeah, bends. And that's just to get the wind factor off. So instead of standing straight up, it's just, wind's kind of going up.
I have poles that are 25 years old and nothing's kinking or falling down there.
Yeah, these are very, we, they're over-engineered by design.
130 miles is a lot.
135.
135 is a lot.
It'd be 145 and then we up the gusts and-
We've had winds above that.
And, um-
I mean, not unheard, I know it's a bad, bad day on the East End if that's happening.
Oh, yeah.
But that would be the time when we would want cellular communications. Is it possible to increase that without affecting the cost incredibly?
I can send you the specs that we, we have, because it's gusts and, and all that.
I'm thinking the hurricane of 38.
Okay, yeah, um, yes, we can increase it, that's federal law, that's, it's called like a tower class three, and that's what if public services is on there, that's what they need to meet. Doesn't mean we can't go above it, you know? And even, I was telling Laurel about this, I was like, this is going to be, this one's, this is a tough site, between foundation, where it's located, I was like, the winter winds, this is going, it's going to be northeast if it comes there, it's like, oh, gusts. Yeah, it's, uh-
Well, yeah, I mean, you-
We're, we even are talking to the tower manufacturer, being like, this is going to be, we need this to be like a tank, you know?
We've had issues with Dune Road, but we, there's a major project happening next year to rebuild the beach, you know, because we've had a near breach not far from here.
Isn't it even right across from it? Like, I've seen, you guys have put like sand every, every year, I go out there and like, I'm like, I'm going to-
There's a, there's a very big federal project to rebuild the beach that should, you know, it's a 30-year, probably, you know, so. It shouldn't be vulnerable like it is today, once that project happens.
Yeah, it's right, the water's right there, you go over that little thing.
We're working, we're currently working with the, just, just an FYI, we're working with the Bayman, that's why Julie's here, actually, she's representing the Baymans Association, which is, not Bayman, I'm sorry.
Commercial fishermen.
Commercial fishermen, I said it before, I made a mistake. The 20 boats, they've got a 5, a 4, 501(c)(3) corporation now. So she's kind of the spearheading the effort so that we got them on board, the design, where we're going to put this location, and we're actually working on conceptual designs at this point to reconfigure the site so that it's beneficial both for the commercial fishermen and the residents, there's going to be some public parking. We're proposing perhaps a, a crossover the dune so that people don't have to walk on the dune. And so there's a, there's a kind of an overall comprehensive plan keyed in to the revenue that's going to be generated from this project, to kind of revitalize that whole end, because it's really unutilized from the rest of the town residence perspectives, you know? Other than the 20 commercial boats, not many residents can utilize that area, so that's part of-
Provide a bathroom potentially in the building that's there.
Yeah.
And supervisor, you questioned if it's going to look like a flagpole. It's just going to be like the cylinder, kind of like that one. And because of the wind, I recommend not putting a flag there, because it just whips around and then it-
It's going to be destroyed.
And then you have to replace it every week and just-
You should put some swiveling generators on there.
Is it? Do you produce all your power?
They do make those for the towers, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Something spinning around at the top?
No, actually, they're directional, they're, they're facing, and they turn.
Those cylindrical ones.
Yeah, and they catch, they're helical, helical. They work pretty well.
Interesting.
So that is a, just to clarify, that is a 100-foot simulation, that's what a 100-foot would look like.
You know, it's going to be white, and you paint it white?
I like doing the sky blue color.
Blends in a little bit.
Blends, blends in better.
It's like a baby blue, still.
The light, light blue.
It's lit up for aircrafts?
We don't have to, FAA is up, 199 and above for red light, so 100 feet, this is, we just have to register with the-
I was just going to say, Julie, it's like a beacon that it's all-
And then that's the other good thing about not having the flag on it, because then you have to light it, light up the tower.
Right.
Next, next one. And even, even what Glenn and Janice and Tom are working on with, with Julie, the design they did with the parking, the walkover, really good idea, I will say that. And even, um, even what Glenn and Janice and Tom are working on with, with Julie, the design they did with the parking, the walkover, really good idea, I will say that. You know, it's great when the government, hey, let's do, if you're gonna do something, do it right once, right? What they're doing is truly changing this area to really use it for everyone, you know. I don't know. We're, we're still working on the plans and we haven't, but once, once we finalize them, we're gonna present it to everybody. It's just that, this is the, the business end of it.
Hi.
This is the business, this is the business end. And then once we kind of come with a working, good document. I just, I just loved how they did that. I was like, this is great, you know.
Right. Well, like, you know, right, like Nick and Tom's office worked with Julie Loftstad and Len to at least lay it out in a way that would be appreciated by the users, the groups.
Particularly the commercial fishing companies that stretch their nets out, or they've been looking for more storage and refrigerated trucks and things like that, pack-out ramps. So we're trying to provide the infrastructure that the commercial fishing industry needs, but also sort of a separate space for the public, that kind of paid parking lot where we can generate some more revenue to help offset the cost of operating this facility and keeping our, uh, the rates down for our commercial fishing fleet. We want to make sure that it's affordable to that.
In this parking lot?
Mm-hmm.
Were you thinking paid parking lot in this?
A discounter of it would be paid, yeah.
That's what we haven't heard yet. Right, okay. Well, I know that.
We'll get that, I'm gonna, we'll get that at another session and I'll, I'll lay that whole plan out.
So I'm glad they're here, the commercial fishermen. They, they put their gear in the parking spots. You know, they've got an organization there and they may not look it, but they do.
We don't have a lot of daily parking where people can pay for the day. This will be all fully automated, where you, you come and register on an app.
Yeah.
And with an app, you do need cell phone service. So we're dealing with another village that wants to do smart parking. And they realized we can't do smart parking without good cell phone service. So now we're back, in front of them again, you know, explaining this, you know. So, and Julie, just so you know, I, I'll send you the drawings after this, but if you, if that, if the 100-foot to the bulkhead's too close, we could work, even move it back a little bit, so it's a little bit.
Thank you.
So commercial fishermen.
Yeah, just so it's not just the hitched one for the bulkhead, actually, too.
Yeah, so.
If in unlikely.
Exactly. Head feet's huge, you know. We need to move it another 10 feet.
Janice? I, a question for you. How does this play into our plans to try to increase the bandwidth along Dune Road for the automated beach parking and all of that?
Helps.
This helps. That's, that, that dovetails in here, because the, the automated parking that we have at Ponclog and all our other beaches, that we're doing a pilot this year.
Right, so I'm wondering, this is.
So once that's fully operational, everybody's gonna be on their phone. That's how it's gonna work. So, you know, you need, you need cell service. Again, it could be okay today, but it's not gonna be okay once that's.
But it's actually the transmission of data relative to the park that parks needs to have that.
Well, but I think there's actually fiber out there, or it might add right upon it. That's would be on the fiber map. I can get you that answer.
But that would be brought.
Oh, yeah, we would bring the fi, so it'd be full fiber.
So there's more fiber optics being brought down by doing that, is, yeah.
It wouldn't go to the west, though, it would be going to the site, so.
Right, right, to the side.
But you can, you can do it wirelessly, too. So that's the whole point of that, right? So I just, oh, where the, what the bandwidth is for that pro, this project.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Like, uh, if the carriers want to do a, a relay to the tower instead of running fiber, they prefer not to.
Exactly.
At Overlook Beach, we have that.
Yeah.
It goes over to, uh, Town Hall.
They're probably gonna, like they're saying, is they're gonna pull fiber off the cable. So that's the, that's the, the source into the network.
That's more resilient, honestly.
Yeah, um, even a, a heavy rainstorm can really mess up that, even that relay. So they do prefer to be a hard line, right?
Well, one can back up the other, because this can go underwater, you know.
Yeah. If it's 100 feet underwater, you know.
We're all, yeah, we're all in trouble.
Well, let's see, year 2079?
Yeah.
No.
2079, it's gonna be 100 feet underwater.
I didn't say it'll be underwater.
Underwater, no. We're gonna reverse global warming.
Yeah, that's what we're working towards.
Are there other documents, other visuals that we want to look at? Next, next slide. This does show the whipping antennas, so.
This one will have it.
This one will have the whipping antennas.
And then can you say for Southampton doors, North Hampton Bayes?
Andrew, it has, uh, said Southampton Fire District.
Probably get to the end of Dune Road.
And then the volunteer Southampton ambulance company, is that correct?
Probably get to Dune Road.
There's Southampton Volunteer Ambulance. There's also Southampton Village Volunteer Ambulance.
Okay.
So everything out on Dune Road.
East of the canal. There's no service east of the canal.
It's not called Dune Road, but it's in Meadow Lane.
Meadow Lane.
Meadow Lane. And they want their service out there.
Yeah. Makes sense.
Uh, and the next slide. So Julie, like I said, we could even, if it's 100 feet for the commercial fisherman, that's too, you know, too tight for comfort, you know, with the town, move it even more, a little more south, you know, you know. Next one. Yeah, next one. That's kind of just showing where we own. Next.
Got almost every state.
Yeah, we, we got one recently in New Hampshire, too. The, the rents out there aren't as good. Low Island's a sweet spot. So dense and, I mean, and the government, you know, sometimes difficult to work with.
Really?
We can be dense as well.
Dense and difficult to work with.
It'd be cold work.
Maybe it's just all cheap.
Yeah, and dense.
So, uh, the process, um, we, we wanted to show you the, um, the conceptual ideas. Yeah, they're, they've given us a letter of intent to do this work. There are some contractual issues that we need to discuss in executive session. Because we, there is like an overlying agreement with another provider. I'm not sure how familiar everybody is with that. So we need to talk about that and, and the steps necessary to move through the contractual process. So I, I wanted to get through this session so that you kind of saw what we're talking about. And then perhaps the next time we, we can get in an exec session, we'll go through the, what we need to do to move this along.
Well, we're gonna end after this and go into executive session. If you want to do that, you can do it today for a short period.
I talked to Mark about this earlier in the day. He's got some kind of filing that's due, that he's swamped with, that he's not available.
Yeah, because this is hard.
He's been handling.
Yeah, he's the contract guy.
I'm familiar with the.
Is Mark on there?
No, I'm just saying it's a long.
You have a long agenda. I, I know I'm scheduled to be in there at two, I think, so.
But there may be some procedural steps we have to take to clear any potential.
Yes, yeah, and I want to go through that in detail so everybody knows the steps.
Good.
Yep.
All right, any other questions for?
So conceptually, you want to potentially think about which height you're comfortable with, and so that they can revise anything, you know.
Well, it sounds like the transfer station, you can do 120 and later on go to 140 if you need to. So that's, that seems like an operator.
Okay.
To build it at 120. And this one, you say you gotta go to 100. I was hoping it would be less, but.
Maybe do 80, and then you can always do the 20 feet.
I'm gonna talk, I'm gonna really have Andrew get the exact height.
Drill down a little, let's, let's.
There's other ways around it, right? If we get to, say if we do 80, he, they might say, all right, can we put a, if they truly need like 90 something feet, they might put a 10-foot whipping antenna with a relay on top, right? So it'll be a taller whipping antenna on top. There's ways around it. Um, and I'll talk with Andrew about how to really nail that down.
Yeah, I think starting out personally, you know, the policy is still like lower and more distributed than one giant.
Now, we have seen with the cell towers in the past that we often see community opposition. I'm hoping that these two sites, we don't see that, but you just never know. So, uh, we're having this work session. It puts it out there that the board is, is looking to do this. You know, I, my experience is that everybody wants better cell service, but they don't want cell towers. They don't, there's a disconnect there, so you can't have one without the other.
Exactly. And, you know, we always say this, you know, uh, since COVID, even since Sandy, a lot has changed, you know. People are on their phone. People are way more remote now, right?
Yep.
There's always gonna be an envy, you know, not my backyard, that doesn't represent everyone, but they always scream loudness. Good thing for you guys, they get to yell at us. Impartially, you guys, but we'll handle, you know, the public and, and educating them. Another thing is when they hear cell tower, they think of massive cell tower, even like the Coast Guard Tower right next to Pontebank Bridge. Then you really show them it, and they're like, oh, all right, that's.
The moment.
Yeah, it's, it's a little different than what, you know, they visualized, so.
Have you ever done, maybe this is silly, but have you done an osprey nest on possible?
So. We have an osprey at Tarifel Fire.
And then we have a lot of bald eagles these days coming now. They're coming back.
So we actually don't want them up there, but we can't do anything when they go up there.
It's actually corrosive, you know, there.
Really?
Yeah, and it's dangerous.
The top's open, all the fiber, they, you know. But even like our tower manufacturer sent us like a 15,000 like bird deterrent system. And I was just looking at this, and I was just like, Cousins a farmer, he just has an owl on a, on a pole. I'm like, all I need to do is get a, go to Walmart and put an owl on top of that tower instead of spending $20,000.
We love our osprey there, you know, we do.
I have a tower at Croton on Hudson, and every year they come back. And the top carrier, every year has such problems to say, during the migration period, they can't go up there. And, uh, so every year, I'm like, guys, you need to get your act together if you want to, you know, work on the tower. But it's crazy how large the branches are.
Yeah, they build a massive nest. So we're, me and Laura said, we're gonna just be buying like the $20 owls when they're putting everything up. We're gonna zip tie it to the top and hope that works, so.
But they wanted me, I actually, the, the top carrier was Sprint, and then they, you know, uh, got bought out by T-Mobile and all stuff. So they took down their, they're taking down their antennas and, uh, the village's question was, can you keep the platform up there for the ospreys?
There you are. Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Oh, Julie, did you want to say something?
Yeah, one minute.
Uh, one minute, definitely.
Hi, Julie Loftstad, Hampton Bayes. I'm here on behalf of the commercial fishermen. I just have three quick comments, um, that we've kind of touched on. One is the fall zone. Um, if you can get me those numbers, um, from the cellphone tower to the bulkhead, that would be great. And then when you guys decide how high it is, we can comment then. Um, also, any liability, I know in the unlikely event that a cellphone tower will kink or bend or whatever, um, just that any boats, vehicles, gear will be covered by the town or the cell tower company. Um, and Tommy John brought up about, um, wind resistance. How about storm surge resistance? Because during Hurricane Sandy, there was a big storm surge. So I'd like to know about that.
Um, yeah, so that will be with the foundation. They'll, um, that, when they engineer the town for the storm surge, that will be.
Because when the storm surge happened, all the sand from the ocean came and pushed onto the parking lot. It was probably eight to 10 feet of sand that eventually ended up on the parking lot. And just the last point that I think Jay brought up, um, it, for the future bigger project, just no loss of space for the fishermen for parking, storage and dragging our nets around. That doesn't necessarily have to do with the cell tower, but just for the project in general.
And, uh, just if, uh, everyone isn't officially insured when we build these towers, so property, et cetera.
Okay.
That's part of it. Uh, carriers carry minimum of like $10 million per carrier, so, yeah. So if you're fully loaded up, we're dealing with almost 40, realistically, sometimes like 60, 70 million in liability insurance, so.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Thank you for inviting me today.
Thank you, Jen.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. Okay, um, any, anyone else? All right, we'll conclude this. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Five hundred.
Janice, thank you for your help with the, uh.
Fish coming in soon?
The hay dump resolution.
Is that good, or are you need?
Fine, everyone's okay with it.
Very good.
There was, I don't know, there was a resolution about, I think we resolved it, about eight affordable housing units in Noia, but I hear it's a private development.
Oh, for credits? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But they're all affordable?
All affordable, so we have.
The entire, the entire unit? Higher development?
The ones they're talking about, yeah, the two buildings with the units in them. And then there's the house, and that's not. But the multifamily component is all affordable.
It's all affordable.
Yeah, which is amazing for Noia. That'll be a very good thing.
That is awesome.
It's needed up there, yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So it's very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Okay, um, let's see, updates?
It's 12:15 already. I think Janice puts updates off, so.
Oh, okay, so we, we don't have updates. All right, fine.
What can I just, Monday at 1 o'clock at Good Ground Park is the unveiling of the Hometown Heroes Banner Program.
Right.
We have three events, right?
We have three events.
Yeah.
Summer news conference, the ribbon cutting for the water crossing, and then the Hometown Heroes Banner Program.
That's Monday?
Monday.
I will be bringing my daughter back from college.
We'll do a moment of, we'll do a moment of silence on Tuesday for Laura Mastis and, um, wife of Bill Mastis and former highway superintendent, who, um, passed away May 12th. So we're not gonna do the moment of silence today, but we'll, we'll incorporate it into our moment of silence next week. I don't have, uh, you know, we can hold off on any other updates unless somebody has something, something kind of sensitive.
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Just to inform the board that this week, the town of East Hampton changed their, their incoming helicopter routes back to the November route. And that affects the entirety of Southampton. Uh, whereas helicopters will, going to East Hampton Airport, um, they go along the South Shore and they turn north at Hampton Bayes. Uh, they fly over Tuckahoe-Sinocoque, they go to Robins Island, and then in through North Sea, Noia, Sag Harbor into East Hampton Airport. For the past year, uh, the helicopters have been using the Sierra Route, which is the south route over Wayneskot. The people there, understandably, I suppose, were really unhappy. And the helicopters would come in and out and travel the southern route out over the ocean. And that's been, um, it's been quiet. So, uh, that, you know, this change, uh, is a change back. Um, it affects the entire town. Very often, helicopters will take the northern route, right, along the North Shore, transition down over West Hampton to get into the, into, over the Atlantic, and then turn back up at Hampton Bayes. So we're gonna be seeing a lot more helicopter traffic, uh, than we did in 2022. And, um, you know, I, I just, I'm, I'm happy to see this change.
They can't niche it up, I mean.
Well, well, they do. They, they have.
Is East Hampton asking for any input from the town or southern?
Not, unless anyone here has, not, not to me. Uh, the exit is over the Sierra Route, which is to the south, over East Hampton Town and out into the Atlantic. But the approach now is, is the November route. We're familiar with this November route. This is the one that existed in 2021, 20, earlier. Uh, this is the route that changed from, uh, the November route used to go over the North Fork, uh, over North Sea, Noia, Sag Harbor into East Hampton. But then they changed the November route to reflect a southern entrance to go up over Hampton Bayes, uh, into the Pecanic Bayes, and then into, um, East Hampton. So I, I would like East Hampton Town to change it back.
Well, we should send them a letter.
We should send them a letter. You're gonna get phone calls.
Yeah, we're already, yeah, we're already starting to. Why don't we work on a letter to, uh, East Hampton Town?
Okay. At the very least, right.
We have, we have a separate council on airport issues, Jim?
We have consulted, um, with one of our, the environmental council, Beveridge Diamond has done work with us before, and some of the landfill issues and whatnot. We, we did, we, um, have them involved with this, with the East Hampton airport issue for a little bit.
Because they're going through some secret process as well, trying to implement restrictions that, um, we understand why, but we also have to look at the traffic impacts and the impacts to West Hampton.
Yeah, yeah. Now, if you recall, we did.
The SECA is designed to change the airport to a prior permission airport. That's.
Yeah, they did it without it at first, and then the court told no.
Right.
Judge basically said, no, you have to have the SECA.
We should be an interested party in that. I haven't really seen anything in terms of scoping sessions.
Haven't seen anything. I haven't seen anything yet.
They did request traffic reports, some studies that we did in the West Hampton area.
I saw that you had one letter to the planning department, but, um, I feel like if they're going through a secret process, we should be an involved agency or.
Yeah, I totally agree with that. It doesn't seem to be communication.
They haven't seen a scoping document for that. And maybe we need to have council involved.
Well, we'll let to see if, if they have sent out anything. But, uh, we have had councils, if you recall, we spoke with, uh, and they spoke at a sex session, a council at Beveridge Diamond, Steve Gordon and his partner, who spoke with us about the options when we was talking about what was happening over at the East Hampton Airport. They essentially told us to kind of, you know, kind of sit still until, they did recommend that, they, they thought they had to do it fully I S. And, and the courts did agree with that analysis. And, uh, so that's where they are now. So, um, so, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll check to see if, if any kind of scoping documents has been sent out. I haven't seen any. And if we need to consult them.
Bringing in special counsel on this issue, I think would be helpful.
Yeah, there could be, yeah. And they've been good. They haven't.
Just to follow the process, because it's a, it's an East Hampton process, and we need, you know, a watchdog.
Yeah, we're very aware that whatever they do there could impact us. You know, we're sort of, well, we're sort of on two fronts, right? I mean, we have the issues that face our eastern town that are directly impacted by what happens at the East Hampton Airport. And I mean, that, what happens there could impact the western town.
Yeah, not even just the western portion of town. It could also impact the eastern portion of the town. Any changes of flight pattern.
It is now.
Sure, absolutely.
Well, you know, the county formed a, a new committee, but they meet once a year kind of thing, um, for local Gabreski residents. So I, there doesn't seem to be much cloud in that.
We had a lot more helicopter traffic last year.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, it's very noticeable.
It stayed in and it squabbed.
But there, you know, there's no way to communicate from, from that standpoint. And I think it has to be municipality to municipality.
One of the things that we did in, in our committee last year, which we're gonna get back together, is we looked at the flights, where they're going. And I maintain a third of East Hampton helicopters are flying over the western part of Southampton Town.
Yep.
You, you just don't know where the helicopter is going. And, you know, I'm a little weird like this. I, I watch them. Not every day, but, you know, they do transition over the western part of the town. So we're seeing helicopters in and out of Gabreski, which is, uh, it is, um, it's a bigger airport. They have more operations. Uh, they get about anywhere from six, around 60,000. It's dropped down a little bit. Uh, flight operations in and out of Gabreski in, uh, East Hampton is about 30,000. So.
But they also have, they also have different flight paths available to them that they don't find. So Gabreski in particular can have air, aircraft coming in lots of different directions. And it's very hard for anybody to tell, you know, that. And that's one of the issues. So when we get calls, you, you just really know where to react.
Yeah, my husband always asks, he's like, they're helicopters. He goes, why can't we make them just go straight up, higher than they are going, and then travel out?
Because they're not, they're not, they're not controlled the way fixed wing aircraft do. They're just, they, they don't have to file flight plans. They don't have to do a lot of stuff that fixed wing aircraft have to do.
And then a lot of them have been flying solo.
Yeah. And they can legally, you know, if there, if there's a reason, then you're pretty easy to find a reason.
Depends on what, you know, where the cloud cover is.
And if there's a lot of air traffic in the area.
Oh, it, all sorts of reasons. They're, they're pretty much free to go where they, you know, want to go. I mean, that's not totally fair, but, you know, that's the way it seems.
And they're allowed as to be. All right, um, thank you, Councilman. Uh, you know, we should work on a letter.
Yes.
Janice, can we put something together? Yes, okay.
Maybe a call supervisor to supervisor.
We need to be official.
We need something in writing.
Yeah, but I mean, just.
If they're changing their routes to one that's gonna put a lot of helicopter traffic off the proper Hampton Bayes.
Well, there's, there's a lot of reasons, different pressures to change routes. So that's something we should find out, you know, where that came from.
Yeah, because their South Fork residents don't want it here.
I could tell you where it came from.
It's your hand, sir.
The inbound and outbound flights were going over.
Wayneskot.
Wayneskot. And I don't want to put it necessarily just on that, on that hamlet, but they, it's. Wayneska, and I don't want to put it necessarily just on that, on that hamlet, but they, it's